Six thirty six.
Yeah, six thirty six. And it looks like once again this meeting is being recorded for broadcast on local cable TV and YouTube and other places as well. So, uh, let's see, we have minutes. October twenty second.
Yes, there are two cents of minutes in the board's packets. One is October twenty second, the other one is October twenty ninth.
We did two minutes last night?
We did, but we had that special meeting tomorrow.
Oh. Just real quick on the sunny hill, I looked at the town meeting board, and I still didn't see any reference to the roads, the roadways. I'm just wondering how they're doing it.
Good point. Is it because of legal? It hasn't come back from legal yet.
Well, the last I heard was that Israel's lawyer or whatever, you know, was going to come up with something.
Yeah, put the town, yes.
To allow it, but I don't know, maybe it doesn't need a town meeting vote, I don't know. I have no idea.
Yeah.
I brought the issue up, so. Someone else to do it.
I'll make a motion, but I have to make it, you know, I would like to, my comment was my comment of Route sixty eight using Campbell Court. I'll state with reason, I'd just like to have that in there on page two, Milliken Brook, just to add it in, I would have. Make a motion to accept with correction.
I will, uh, second that, but I have a change as well.
Say again?
I will, I'll second your motion, but I also have a change.
Okay.
Uncle first?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, it's on the last page and it is the twenty second. Tim asked if the board is happy with their new location in the conference room of Attic, Attic, Annex, and, uh, what I'm questioning is that statement that it works well, because I think it's rather crowded and.
It doesn't work well.
Right. It, uh, it probably beats the parking lot.
Especially tonight.
Yes.
Kind of beats downstairs of town.
Yes, it does.
It's, you know, I don't know.
Holy phrase, I believe.
I don't think it would hurt.
Tim asked if the board is happy with the new location.
And they all feel it is workable, how's that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not reasonable.
It's workable for small hearings.
Yes, that was the idea, anything larger than.
Yeah.
Anything more than.
Anything more than what we have here, we moved into the library.
Yeah.
It'll be even better once we get that TV working so we can see things.
Dick, can you just repeating your comment one more time that you would like adding?
Road to Route sixty eight, use Campbell Estates reason.
All right. So on that last comment, you know, it works for most meetings.
I'll feel workable, you know.
For most meetings, yeah.
I'll feel it's workable for most meetings, okay? All right.
Remove that correction, you're seconding.
On seconded.
Okay, any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, okay, October twenty ninth minutes.
Unless somebody can find it, an error, I didn't see one in there.
What?
Isaiah, unless somebody can find an error, I did not see one in there.
Not seeing anything.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of October twenty ninth.
Second?
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Onward, we have A and R. Or we are Davis Street.
When you walk around the place, how many, how many artifacts do you find around that area?
On Davis?
Yeah, yeah, the old farm there, I would think you would trip over old wells and old things all over the place.
It's got a lot of history down there.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Good evening, Doug Andryzak, Andryzak Lansavang, here on behalf of Sandy Fife, property on Davis Street, part of the old homestead for many years. Back, I think, in the early nineties, we created a lot over here for Linda Lee Fife, and what we're doing at this time is we've created a parcel A that would come out of the Linda Lee Fife property, and that will go from Linda Lee back into Sandy Fife of the Turcot Trust, and then we've created a parcel B of equal size with parcel A that will come out of the Sandy Fife property and go into Linda Lee. Not changing the frontages at all, leaving it with the frontage of two hundred feet for Linda Lee Fife, taking four thousand one hundred and thirty square feet away, adding four thousand one hundred and thirty square feet on the other side, and we start off with eleven point four eight acres for the remainder, and we end up with eleven point four eight acres for the remainder. So again, not creating any new lines, taking the Linda Lee lot from this and shifting it this way.
I'm just kind of curious why.
Sandy Fife wants to have a strip of at least sixty feet wide through there.
Someday may have an estate lot or something like.
Yeah, sort of planning ahead for things.
Okay, that makes sense.
Been a while since I've heard that name. She used to work here, right?
Yeah.
Time goes on.
Yeah.
Community Hall.
I am. Fife is a student in high school.
I don't know, I don't think so. It might have been maybe her daughter or something.
Something like that.
Yeah. A Lisa Fife?
Talking thirty years ago.
Yeah, time does go on.
Yeah. Anyway. Like I say, frontage is fine.
No, I don't, it's.
I don't see any problem with it.
I don't either. Especially now that I know why, I don't have to sleep at night wondering.
We've had stranger reasons.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Peter, Peter Heaney. Old, old Peter.
Yes, good old Peter.
I'll move to endorse.
Second?
Any discussion? And we have the fee and the form A and all that.
Yes, there's the two copies of the form A, and the fee was four hundred dollars, check number seventy five sixty six. You want to verify that or not?
Okay, looks good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Didn't blow out?
Nope.
In favor?
Aye. Thank you.
I'll tell you, you have that, you can.
Okay, wonderful, appreciate it.
We had that stamped on.
I'm gonna take this jacket off. I don't know, I had a hurt side.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, the front side and the back side. Did you ever turn on these microphones?
I did, yes.
You did, okay, just checking.
Today is the?
Twelfth.
The twelfth, eleven twelve nineteen. Forty-nine days left to go, but who's counting?
How do you get it?
This paper is copy here.
Put your JH on that and get a registered copy back to us.
Do we have a piece of paper there, please?
Okay.
Wonderful. We thank you very much for your time and your endorsement. And we wish you all a pleasant evening and a happy Thanksgiving and a Merry Christmas.
You too.
In case we don't see you before the end of the year.
Enjoy hiking around the woods.
You bet we will. Thanks very much now.
All right. Take care, good to see you again.
You too.
Okay. Next stop. Extension of special permit, Milliken Brook. Just a little bit curious, I thought it was M I L L I K E.
I think it is.
Okay. Couple of times I think it's come up now with a second I, a third I, the last I is an E.
Okay. I before you accept after. I before you accept after.
Yeah, yeah, something like.
Okay, it's in, it's in.
So, um, among other things, I did have a conversation with Mr. Blair this afternoon. I guess he had had a conversation with Dave early during the afternoon. Our question on the extension was whether a vote for an extension required a super majority or just a plain majority, we did get a legal opinion on it, and you have a copy of the legal opinion, and I don't know, as usual, the answer I think is more complicated than we'd really kind of like. Anyway, just reading this very, very quickly, it says, and this is from Amy Questle. It says, "In my opinion, there's no statutory provision for extending or modifying a special permit. In my further opinion, substantial construction that has begun an extension is not necessary. Additionally, to claim that substantial construction is commenced, the special permit must be recorded, as any special permit that has not been exercised and has not been recorded will be considered lapsed." I'm not quite sure that I understand that sentence completely. Other than, yeah, he had to register, he had to register the special permit.
Yeah.
You know, at, at the courthouse. But I don't, I don't necessarily think that that meets the criteria of substantial construction.
No, it's the first step. And I have to make a claim of substantial construction, the special permit first has to be filed, recorded at the registry deeds, and if that doesn't happen, then the argument is, is not as strong if work has commenced under a special permit that has not been recorded. So she's setting up the rest of the opinion by this first step, which must happen, in order for anything else to apply here.
So, um, I guess kind of the question really comes up is, is an extension necessary?
That's a good question.
Okay. Now, you're saying that you have done.
Of course he has done his A and R, but that's all he's done, A and R.
Well, plus I sold off properties, but I asked, asked my counsel to, you know, the same question. He actually couldn't find anywhere where it said it needed a super majority or a simple majority, so.
I think she's kind of saying that.
Yeah, so what he said to me was, if it's been exercised, then it's deemed to be good. For it doesn't need to be extended, is what my attorney, the gist of what George told me. So basically what he's saying is, you relied on it to sell property and you realized, and you did, we did forty-one perks based upon the preliminary plan that we put in that we got the special permit for. And as you guys know, the special permit has to be gotten before you can go to the, or at least in conjunction with the plan, because how do you know you're going to be able to get the lower zoning if you don't have the special permit? So, and we got the special permit, at least in this case, first, we did the perks, we, we, we cut off the land, we sold off some property, we sold off Schwartz's house, those kind of things, all based upon that special permit. So in George's opinion, that exercises.
That was after, Swatz is after, you added, you added it in after.
Right, but that's all based upon that special permit. So we sold off property.
To the chair first, do we have a copy of that?
What? The special permit?
I think I turned it in.
Oh, sure we have. Is it in there?
It's, it's in your packet, it's under item three. So there's the request, there's the opinion, there's the, of the minutes from two thousand eighteen, and then the special permit is immediately after that. Item three?
Item three.
There's a header, it's part of item three. That's, that's, that's an addendum to item three, it's item three of the packet.
I got item three here, like this.
I'm sorry, I kept the master copy of all supporting information in my packet, which is right here, my, so this is, this, this is the decision. Instead of making duplicate copies, I kept the one with the master. Dot com.
This special permit shall be subject to conditions of approval of the yet to be submitted and approved. It's definitive subdivision plan. Subject to receipt of a report from Quinn Engineering showing forty-one buildable lots.
So it was after. It was after we bought Schwartz's. Because it went from thirty-six, thirty-five to forty-one at that point.
So where's, where's the original?
It's on record.
The original special permit? This was done for Swatz and Swatz's?
And both together.
But Swatz wasn't done at the same time, they weren't done at the same time. So what was done for the first time for a special permit? Where's that one?
I think they were all done at the same time, after we bought Schwartz's.
I don't recall doing two.
No, no, thinking of the A and R plan, we did, that was two different ones. And for one of them I had to go to the ZBA.
No, you had to do a regular definitive subdivision plan to show the number of lots.
Preliminary, yes.
Preliminary, yeah. And you brought that in to be okay for an open space. In order to the open space, we didn't do a special permit at that time?
After I'd bought Schwartz's, you did, I did.
Only after you bought Schwartz's, not when you did the original Milliken Brook.
That was all. It was all at once, dude.
Well, regardless of if that additional property added anything, this is.
Yeah, but the time difference, there was two time differences in the thing.
Right, but the one that was.
Wow.
The one that was issued was the one after I, I didn't submit anything until after I bought Schwartz's house and, and land, and I, I cut some off and sold it.
Wow, 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 wow. You know what isn't here? If this is the whole thing. It doesn't even say how many lots this special permit is good for.
It says in the minutes.
Interesting, interesting. Anyway. Oh, no, excuse me, excuse me.
Said forty-one.
Yes, we're subject to receipt of a report from Quinn showing forty-one buildable lots on the conventional plan.
On a conventional?
Okay.
But yet, we were supposed to do it for open space, this is a special permit for open space.
Yeah.
And so, how do you know how many lots?
If I may.
How many lots would actually be in the open space plan? You don't, but it cannot be more than forty-one. That's, that's the only guarantee that says you can't have more than what that preliminary plan says, forty-one maximum. Maybe it'll only be thirty-nine, maybe it'll only be thirty-six, but it can't be more than forty-one. So, I don't know, I guess, you know, my, my major question is, I'll go right back to the beginning. Is an extension necessary? And that hinges on, do we feel that there has been some substantial construction? Do those perk tests or whatever constitute substantial construction?
Construction of? A subdivision?
Construction associated with. Construction associated with the special permit.
So there are no roads put in?
The?
No, no.
The subdivision will not be on town shore or water?
No, no utilities.
So the septic systems?
No, no power.
Are a requirement, so the perk tests are a requirement.
In order to come up with the forty-one, yes. But yeah, but our conditions in there doesn't mean crap.
The two years?
Well, that too, but in there, doesn't it say, you know, within a, within a period of time? I thought we were supposed to have the definitive.
It doesn't say when the definitive land has to be submitted. Any thoughts, Dave?
Well, I would just say that the applicant requested an extension of the special permit. What's not before the board tonight is a determination whether work is started under the special permit. That would be a precursor to a definitive plan being filed, where that type of information would be supplied at that point to justify whether a definitive could be submitted to the board. So, what's before the board this time, in my opinion, is whether or not the special permit needs to be extended or not.
Or if you just withdraw.
Or if you could just withdraw it, then that would take care of the matter too. And if you're comfortable and confident that the special permit has been exercised on a timely basis, now be a presentation for another day, more detailed than just what you're reporting, which you know the site probably better than, as well as anybody.
Yeah, I mean, I think I just withdraw it. I'm confident that, you know, what I was told, not substantial construction, but it needed to be exercised. And the threshold for an exercise is very low. So, she's giving you a little different wording than what I got. Substantial construction, you know, it can be interpreted a lot of ways. To me, substantial construction is starting the roads, but, you know, an exercise, George told me is, once it's been exercised, it's locked. And the threshold to prove whether it's been exercised or not is a very low threshold. So, I will withdraw it, and I will, you know, if you guys want to vote us to whether or not you feel it's been exercised, I mean, that could be before you, but I don't need to do that. I'll just pull it.
I don't think we need any kind of paperwork for that. This is not a-
No.
It's not an application per se, we just note it.
Just note that I-
So, did you bring the copy of the plan showing the access to the railroad?
No, I couldn't get a hold of Julian, he spoke to me. He sat here, and he said he would do it, you heard him, he told me, and I think he told me he did it. But when I talked to you, I hadn't, I couldn't get a hold of him, so I'll get it from him tomorrow. I'm sure he did it, he said he would.
Speaking of artifacts and ghosts, I'm beginning to think that-
The plan's a ghost.
Plan is a ghost. Okay, well, that ends Milligan Brook, as long as you're here. We do have on our agenda subdivision development, Bryce Lemon Estates. And about the only thing to note, I guess, is we did get a report from Quinn showing places that they want to do core samples on the paving. And I don't know, does anybody have any comment on?
Was that the-
The map in here.
Someplace I saw it.
Item four is a supplement to the fourth packet, so we look forward to that.
Was that the end of phase two, is the other side of Millbrook Circle?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
There was a supplement. There are two supplements, the items in the packet, looking for that there. This has the map and the correspondence from Quinn. It's not in your packet because it came in late, so we just did an addendum for additional information.
So, it has been done or will be done?
The core samples have not been done yet.
Not been done.
That was just sent to Mass Broken Stone today.
Oh, okay.
Of the locations where Carl thought would be the best to do the core sample.
All right. Now, is this Yankee that would do this?
I don't know, I think Trap Rock is gonna do it, and maybe they'll have a Yankee do it. But Yankees are the one who tested it and found a fault with it.
Okay. Would seem for consistency, Yankee should do this one too.
Yeah, I'm happy to have him do it, Dave. Bye.
You did a good job. How many houses do you have going on phase two?
We're pouring three foundations this week. Poured one last week. All the three houses have been sold. So, right now-
All the three?
Yeah. All with three lots. It is, and I'll tell you what, that happened, with the permit by law, though, you know, my phone shut off, I mean, they wouldn't call, they didn't call them, because they were afraid, you know, I wouldn't really get a permit. Once it was determined I could get permits, I sold a lot more houses, because brokers wouldn't take that chance, you know? So, yeah, it sold rather quickly, and then nothing's, nothing up there sold for less than mid-fours.
Really?
Yeah.
And we were saying, now phase three comes in from Main Street?
Yeah. We started the tree clearing. We got approval from the environmental people to do that.
Yeah, wasn't it Army Corps of Engineers or something like that killed, what do they call it, way back, back, was it Harrington, or somebody else was up there, sat it in?
Yeah.
Way back.
Yeah, well, probably from the Army Corps, where you get the permit for the historic.
Yeah.
I hope to be starting Brettinol in the spring, the construction of the roads.
Well, wonders ever cease.
I know. I've been, I'm finally through the, I mean, I digress from Bryce, but, you know, so just, you asked about phase three, so I was gonna tell you some of the other stuff. So, once I get that done, then I can hopefully, I can finish Bear Hill too at the same time. So, I should be doing those two this spring. Hopefully, have all my permits, so I gotta get an Army Corps permit, I gotta get a four-one water quality cert, and a DCR variance to fill those wetlands over there. But they did finally determine exactly where the zone is. They changed all the zone AMAPs in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Oh, okay.
And it changed, you know, I was afraid I was gonna, I did, I do have to move the detention pond, but other than that, most of the lots are gonna end up staying in the same place that the roads are, so I thought it was gonna be a disaster, but it didn't.
So, if we drain out the water out of Molten Pond when they do the tip, will that shrink it at all?
I hope so. Are they getting rid of the dam?
They were trying.
Oh, I hope they do.
A lot of people don't want that dam in there, period. They wanna, two point five million right now, it's up to, to build a new dam.
The worst part is, they make you, they make you go through this crap with, I mean, it's awful what they make you go through to keep, for the upkeep of it. They got every, so many years, you have to have an inspection done of it, you have to write a report on how you're gonna maintenance and operation of it, I mean, it's a ton of work, and all the engineers do it, and they charge a fortune for it. And so, I get rid of the dam, you don't need it, you let it go back to a stream like it was.
I was gonna say, that'll just be a little stream.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'd be surprised, I can remember a long time ago, when, back when I was in Concom, and it was Julian, and I think there was somebody else around there, we had asked just exactly how much watershed was there around there. You get right down to it, there isn't much of a watershed in that area, you know, so to me, let it go back to a stream. You're not planning, you know, retrieving any ice blocks out of there for refrigeration, so, or cutting timber, you know, sawmill for the old turbine.
And the back part of it too, the, I mean, it's so shallow back there.
Yeah.
If you ever fell out of the boat, like, they were in canoes back there when I was, you know, back in, if you ever fell out of the boat, you'd sink in that mud down to like the center of the earth for Christ's sake.
Yeah.
They'd never pull you out of there.
Yeah.
It's, I don't know, I don't like it.
It's almost like a peat bog over in the back.
Getting rid of that, yeah. I like the idea of getting rid of that, Dave.
Yeah.
There must have been on that back end, one tiny cranberry log.
I would not doubt it.
There are still, there are still some cranberry plants around the very edge of it.
Wow.
All right, okay.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Okay. Next, we have a chapter sixty-one A notice for the property on Turkey Hill Road.
Yeah, I think we were supposed to have done this first, before we signed the A and R. But they, I think they, the select board just wants it for their records. And I could have sworn, did I write it down? Didn't we not vote on that?
Concom did.
Concom?
No, this board has not voted on this matter regarding whether or not to accept it or not. This is the first that we, this board has of this information.
All right. Make a motion that this planning board does not feel we have any-
No interest.
Interest in this sixty-one A on Turkey Hill Road.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and next, let's go along here. East County Road Self-Storage Facility, ZBA. This is interesting, looks like George loose here has got a little competition.
Yes, it does, doesn't it? Very much so. I was totally impressed. The size of it and all that. And it's not all the property either, it's just a-
It's three out of the five lots, and four out of the six lots.
Where is this?
On Route sixty-eight, just above the Bus Company Buzz, and then you got Curtis's, Chris Curtis. And then you have the, the Prey family bought it, Mrs. Prey, I believe, bought the property. It used to be Harry Johnson, that's where he wanted Tina to put the Johnson Fence Company way back one. And that's the one that they had a whole bunch of sale signs up there, trying to sell for house lots, and that's when I opened my mouth about it was zone, like industrial, yeah, business or whatever you wanna call it, yeah.
Which led to the-
Yes.
File change.
That is-
They declared that industrial was removed, industrial was replaced.
Yeah.
So, this matter's gonna be heard by the zoning board on the twentieth of November, as is the board's prerogative, if it chooses to accept it, is to provide comments to the zoning board or not regarding this matter right here.
Kind of interesting, I did not, well, I can't say that I really looked at this all that carefully, yet.
I can say, I'm sorry to interrupt, but staff has worked with this applicant to develop and set up plans and to approach the zoning board of appeal, so if you have any questions, I think we can take a crack at answering those.
I guess the first thing that kind of comes to my mind is what I'm seeing on this cover page.
Yeah.
Possibility of a couple of signs. One of them having an LED message sign.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
The signage is not part of the proceedings on the twentieth, that's for the planning board to sort out regarding sign, I believe, if I understand it correctly. That the planning board would issue a permit or not, or put conditions on the type of signage, yeah.
So, I don't know, sent me a comment, we could maybe make the ZBA. Is it a thing you tend to-
Too blown up.
Place a sign, you know, on East County Road? Guess my other kind of question here is, are these trees planted or are they existing?
I think what you see there is kind of schematic, these trees, it's kind of schematic. I don't remember if there's a full landscape plan associated with this or not, but that's more schematic than anything else, that's not a landscaping plan per se.
Well, there are, kind of interesting. There are trees shown on East County Road on this plan, individual trees. They're not showing any of the trees that are shown on the plan across the back.
No, because it's forest already.
It doesn't say forested already, so it kind of gives me the impression that they are. I'm gonna put some trees out front there, which would be kind of nice, it would look a little better than the bus depot.
I'm trying to think, because Prey and, you know, who else owns property in that area also, don't you? Very, very close to it, you know, I haven't got it around here, but Julian, but Truber, and then there's somebody else that has it off of Glenwood Road, you know, in the back. But I, Prey, I do believe is the one that, you know, abuts it.
Yes, his property, his residential property is right behind the commercially zone lots. Then there's the Daugherty property, then there's the Michael Drive subdivision there, kind of nearby.
Most-
Not Michael.
Yeah, that one, with the Musso.
Oh, Mi, oh, further down, but-
Thank you.
Yeah, the other way, it's, yeah.
Holy crap, oh, come on, Brian. Assuming they're showing these two trucks, they are indicating that-
Trailer trucks to make the swing.
Yeah, roadways will be sufficient.
That is correct, this is an auto turn analysis for two types of vehicle, one is the largest sized fire vehicle, the other one is the largest sized truck that can enter the property. And this shows the functionality on the site using those vehicles to get around, which is something that staff requested that the applicant provide, just to show that the site actually was functional.
Yeah.
And the, it did show one of the buildings down near the Curtis, a tall one.
Closest.
Yeah.
That's an office with storage space of, that's the one, the Curtis one, probably is here, right next to the Suzie Lock, and it's meant to be an office plus storage space. Storage space for like equipment, for the facility, not for rental.
Yeah, for plowing snow or-
That kind of thing.
Keeping the place clean, whatever, maintenance. Because I've heard of places before that it's very hard to plow such a long distance, and when you're putting snow, that distance, it's hard. And that's one reason why, what does it show for putting snow?
I think snow storage areas were designated on there. I have to check that. If they're not on there, maybe you know where the Snow Storage Area is.
Yeah.
We also like to verify that there's gonna be a landscaping tree plan. Let's just say- Let's just say there's one.
On sixty-eight.
Yeah, on sixty-eight side at least, and maybe at the end. Again, I, you know, I can't, you know, get in my mind exactly picture where this is, where this is going to be, I don't know about where it is, but.
It's on the flat part before.
Yeah.
Right next to the Curtis property.
Right across from George, Chrissy, and our select person.
Which one?
Leah.
Yeah, okay.
I would say offhand, you know, I could see trees for that. But if I was in the self-storage business, I would want to have it somewhat out in the open too.
Wow.
For self-advertising.
Say you want is you want some pretty tall trees with no low branches.
Okay, pine trees, yeah.
You know, the first branch is twenty feet up.
Yeah.
So there's good visibility looking into it and so forth.
It's not as if it is a solar field.
No, no. I don't know. So you've got some notes maybe to send to ZBA.
Yeah, signage that have to come before the planning board. I'll confirm that there's going to be a separate landscaping and tree planting plan. At least under sixty-eight side or from the whole site. Usually get them from the whole site.
Yeah. What I mean, you know, even, even, on the backside, it just includes existing trees.
Right, that would be as simple as that, obviously. And then to verify the snow storage areas. Now, this here, I'm not sure if you caught it, but this is going to be done in phases, that's the intent. To break it up into four phases, I believe.
I quickly went over that page, but I didn't. I picked four.
I did see that there's a detention pond down in the fat connoisseur that'll be going to Concom. There is wetlands in the back.
It'll need conservation review as well. Also a detention pond in the front of the site, in case of two sixty-eight.
Yeah. For stormwater management?
I believe so. He's probably going to need the DPW to review it, because I think DPW's concerns were that no improvements happen on town property. That whatever they need to do for infrastructure otherwise happens on their property. Including that detention area is.
Yeah.
It says appropriate I read it a minute ago. Trees anyway, so it's very fine print. Appropriate proposed tree line.
Let me see.
Yeah.
And it seems like the lights are all internal?
There's going to be external lights on the trails themselves, but minus any of those lights are directional. Downward diminishes light trespass on the site.
Right.
As opposed to what's happening a couple of sites before that one. We did ask for a photometric, we either have it in this batch or we have it in a different batch. We asked the applicant to just prove out that the lights would be directional and maintain more or less on site.
Yeah.
These triangles are the lights. These are primarily on the building. The light details. I don't have the photometric on this set, but there is a photometric to support. I have the photometric on my draft set from our conversations with this applicant over seven meetings. And also the light details on the other information.
Okay.
This is what he submitted to the zoning board. I, I can check with the zoning board chair to see if he submitted the lighting plan. Well, I can ask you, did he? Well, it's in his best interest to supply a lighting plan that he provided as a draft copy when we were advising him. Because he did have the photometric to support and also the landscaping plan, which will amplify here. You want to amplify this light's lighting plan? What's the photometric?
Anything else?
Some border health will need conservation, possibly earthworks.
And they're not going to be bringing in anything to speak of, because the bank runs fairly high up. So they're probably going to flatten it out, keep everything on site. Besides that, if they have any extra in order to get, in order to put it.
I, I don't believe it has, would have anything to do with earthwork. But do you remember, I don't know, it was quite some time back, something came up about some, I don't know if it was DPW regulations or something about that, if you're opening a clearing any large area of land, do you remember details of what that was all about?
Seems to me they had the right to do, wasn't that to do with subdivisions though?
I don't think it specifically pertained to subdivisions.
Didn't.
I think it just had to do with clearing, you know, larger plots. I don't remember anything ever coming of it.
Can't either at the moment, does not ring bells.
I just remember something coming up and there was some kind of discussion about it. I, I don't believe, we, we don't have anything in our regulations regarding that kind of thing. So. Anyway.
All right, you said November twentieth?
Yes. I believe it's the only item that night, and I think it was six thirty, you know.
And if I need to share with the board, this has come before the Conservation Commission at the last week's meeting, and they did not have any issues with it.
Good to know. Okay. All right, so that'll be next, next Wednesday.
Okay, we done with that one?
Okay.
Uh, let's see, Zero Berry Paxton Road decision, we
You have the draft copy of the packets, this is the original clean copy. I saw that there's nothing else you'd like to see added to this.
Like the conditions? Simple.
Yeah, I tried to.
Yeah, it was only one lot, but they're able to put a multifamily if they needed to, or
Yes.
Believe you could.
They can put a two-family because it has to be a multiple of the underlying area requirement
Yeah.
of the zoning district, which exceeds by the factor either one half or two.
The area density, I think it is. All right, so what you need then is a motion to sign.
I hate to bring this up.
I have a computer in the next room, because I'm close by, so.
Bring it up, no, let's.
State law is a special permit. We voted to grant the special permit, we require a supermajority.
Okay.
Not a decision. Not a decision.
Not a decision.
The decision to approve it, to sign it, to just sign it is a majority.
It's just a majority.
Just a simple administrative matter of putting a signature.
I just want to keep all things equal.
It's a good, good thing to have. Here it is, a lot of area for a two-family dwelling, this is under fifteen A. Lot of area for a two-family dwelling should be fifty percent greater than the corresponding one-family dwelling. So the underlying zoning district is R sixty and has close to thirty acres. But there's no far requirement, just the area requirement.
That's right.
Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you.
No, that's good. Okay, do I have a motion to sign the certificate?
I'll move.
Go ahead.
I still move to sign the
Give us the clean copy. Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I like this stuff, nice, lots of surface layers.
Yeah, I try now.
So you're next on the list.
Great, thank you.
Uh, let's see, next is Thirty Prescott Street decision, which I think you said is not.
It's not quite ready yet, I'll have it for the next meeting.
Okay. Municipality vulnerability preparedness.
Oh, yeah.
What would I read?
Awesome!
Would I be not prepared for that in a pack?
A lot of things.
I think I have some information in the packet, I have the full handout, the presentations are here.
Yeah.
I'm going to take it with those. I, I think I kept the packet simple in there, just to give you some of it, not all of it. I think the matrices are in there, matrices are in there.
Yeah, I saw those earlier.
Which is, is what resulted from the workshop. The first, the handouts describe what the workshop was about. Basically, the town is applying for a grant under this program. And as part of applying for the grant, the engineering firm does the workshop to gather information such as what's the most vulnerable areas in town, and what can be done to address mitigation of those areas with respect to climate, climate effects. It was there for
What, who did you say presented this?
This was Western Sampson.
Sampson put it on.
Yeah.
I found it very interesting, and unfortunately, it's not what I anticipated when, the night before, Mike had asked if I would like to come to it. I think it was something altogether, when you say municipal vulnerability preparedness, and I'm thinking it was something else in the back of my mind. But anyways, I got there. There's a lot of things I opened my mouth about. And it was interesting, everybody, what a discussion. I have to admit, that was one heck of a, you know.
You had a lot of different opinions in the room at the same time.
You couldn't believe it.
Harry Sackman was there from CIPC, the Chiefs of Police and Fire were there. Town Administrator was there. Consulate Asia was there.
Yes, she was, yeah.
Nancy. What did it came up?
Illinois.
Illinois.
Yeah.
The DPW director.
Joe.
Joe. I think we heard a lot of the term master plan.
Yes.
They tried to bring this into the folder of master plan. That was referenced a lot, and that's actually one of the, one of the priority items that developed on the matrix, when the matrix was there. And the dots indicate what the consensus priorities were from all the things that were listed.
Yeah.
You don't have that in this one?
I, I looked at it.
I think that's in, is that in your packet?
Yeah, I think it is in the packets somewhere.
And it was interesting, you know, some of the things that they talked about, especially on dams. You know, there wasn't really that many, you know, I think the biggest one was molten pond, that, you know, if you're going to get any problems.
Oh, yeah.
All the, you know, the majority of the others, there were no homes downstream of them or whatever, so you might wipe out a road or two and something like that, but I, I I thought it was a very good very good discussion. Uh, I'm sorry I had to laugh at that, Brooke Trout. It had to have been Joe. We need to have a nice place where Joe to go fishing once in a while. And of course, the very last thing was, that was my biggest peep of them all. Beavers, last, last item on there here. There should have been a sudden set clause put into that bill, because it's costing the municipalities in this state an awful lot of money.
Yeah.
And
Well, and beavers was on both. And there are two groups that broke out into the groups, beavers was on both of the groups, so.
Yeah. Very much so. Opportunity to tell them about Woolbrook the Wisp. Which the majority have never heard of. So, what the heck?
What's up to you?
When the ice freezes over and all the methane gas comes out and When the ice freezes over and all the methane gas comes out and ignites by static electricity and it's a blue flame, that's called Williver the Wisp.
By the Wisp, I remember it.
What do you call this?
Williver, Williver the Wisp.
Wilbur?
Williver.
Williver.
Williver the Wisp.
I like it.
I've never seen it.
My father and Tony Kotonin, uh, they used to see it, especially at, down near Tony's, uh, on Glenwood, where Skip Clark lives up on the hill and, you know, the house lower to the thing. Oh yeah, uh, in the middle of, especially a nice camp night.
I'm sure it would happen in camp.
Yeah. And for some reason or other, there was a Bab wire and other things around, whether what it was or that caused the spark or whatever, but all of a sudden, boop, there's a little wood flame out there and then, boop, gone. But it's all the vegetation, when it rots, produces methane.
Oh yeah.
So, and that's one of the reasons why I'm all upset with beavers doing all that and they complain about cows giving off methane. Beavers are doing the same thing by building beaver dams. But it's always nice to tell the old, the old stuff, you know, that used to be around.
I've never heard of that.
There was one year in a molten pond.
Oh.
Turned over.
Yes.
And it was, I don't know, several days, what I mean?
Yeah.
You couldn't, you almost couldn't drive down past it.
It was terrible.
It smelled awful.
It was awful.
Yeah.
It was awful.
Yeah.
And that's all methane.
Yeah.
With some other stuff.
So I, 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 I'm looking forward, do you have the, and we, you really don't know when they're going to come back now for the...
Um, they're going to feed this information back to the town as, as a report, a draft report for comments. Uh, I think that's the next step.
Yeah, then there's a public...
Public information session.
Yeah.
To coincide with after that.
Yes.
So there's more steps that are going to happen after this, we'll keep the board updated on what those are and... Yes, there are more steps, that's correct.
And that's to me, you know, just for the public to get out there and, uh, to check it out.
Do you want us to keep that?
No, it's okay, we'll do it on there.
Climate change. All I wait for is the mantle to shift.
Well...
Waiting for what?
The mantle.
Oh, okay.
Mantle to shift.
South pole turns into north pole and...
That too.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, it probably, I don't know, you, to make it, has never been around, yet either of you, I think the rest of us have been here when we've had volcanoes go off and the sky's been, you know, clouded with all the ash and everything else and how it cooled down the atmosphere.
Oh yeah, that was, well, I think... Somehow, I keep thinking, maybe it was eighteen eighty-three?
That was the big one.
The year without a summer?
Without a summer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That would be scary.
Yes, most definitely, especially, I keep thinking of Yellowstone for now, though.
Wow.
That's a, that's going to be a super.
That would be something different.
Yeah.
My sister was preparing with my mother and they were working on a, a report for, I think she was in like fourth grade or something for, for school and the, keep, there's a couple of those great big huge gas tanks in Laconia, right in the middle of the town, like the, this, they had stored propane and, and gas and the thing blew up. Right when she was reading about volcanoes.
Whoa!
I guess, you know, I, I guess these things only do really happen, I don't know, you know, once every umpteen thousands of years.
Yeah.
You know, maybe even millions of years, but, I don't know, we just haven't had anything.
No, we've been, like I say, it's been twenty-something years, we haven't had a hurricane come through, you know, through here. And, um, pray we don't, but someday it will and, and then, all these young kids are going to say, oh my God, it's climate change, no, it's just natural.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it is terrible to watch and...
With the size of the trees that we have now.
Oh yes.
Around in this area.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, a real honest to goodness, you know, category four hurricane or something like that.
Yeah.
I just keep thinking, I, I drive down Palmaguss.
Yes, and that's what I brought up that, the other day at this, that meeting.
What I mean?
Yeah.
What, what a mess would be made?
Yes.
Right along there?
Yeah. How many trees are leaning over the power lines?
Oh yeah, yeah. And then they're on a steep hillside, which means that probably structurally, even in the ground, not...
Well, you know, the westerly prevailing winds have made those roots strong for those westerly winds, but if the wind turns around and comes in from the east.
Yeah.
And that's what happened in the thirty-eight hurricane, is the fact that the hurricane went up Connecticut River.
Right.
And the wind was...
Easterly flow.
Easterly flow.
Yeah.
And that's when a lot of the buildings went down and the trees and everything else. Oh yeah.
And, you know, and well, granted, a whole lot smaller, but you ne- you never know when some of these strange things are going to happen.
That's right.
Halloween storm that we just had.
Yeah. Holy crap.
I had, I'd just done a little bit past the bottom of my garage, huge pine, big old pine tree, you know, thirty-six inch.
Wow.
You know, base like that, but it forked.
Oh yeah, okay.
About fifteen feet up in the air.
Yeah.
And it was four o'clock in the morning and I heard it, crack! And one, one half of it came down and I've got one of these canvas tractor sheds right on top of it.
Oh no.
So, but the worst part there was, then I looked at what was left, okay?
Yeah.
Is a thirty-six inch diameter pine tree, it goes up twelve feet, and where that part cracked off, it's down to maybe about twelve inches in diameter. And three feet above that, it's back up to two feet in diameter.
Took the support out too.
Yeah, so I had to take that down because, again, okay, that wasn't an easterly wind, but if there was an easterly wind that came in, that other part would go straight on my garage.
Yeah. Always be prepared.
Yeah. Anyway, and you never know.
That's right.
Okay, next.
Full town meeting.
Full town meeting agenda, I think we took a look at it, I don't know.
Have fun.
Have, oh, that's right, you're not going to be there.
I will not be here, I'll be at, and Spencer, for Central Mass Regional Planning Quarterly Meeting.
I think you had yours, it's a just drafted agenda.
Oh.
So that you have, yeah, so you have a quorum.
If we have a quorum, we should have.
Yeah.
We should have an agenda and open a meeting if we need to.
Right, that's what I was getting at in there, was just to make sure, I recall the procedure from last time, in the spring we...
Wouldn't you have a meeting prior to it, is that what you...
No, during.
During.
Because in case something happens.
I've, I've got you.
Yeah, just to cover bases.
You know, the place is loaded with people that don't like the, uh, the, what is it? The frontage or something like that, you know?
Yeah, and we discussed a little bit, you know, about those particular votes this afternoon. And, you know, I, I don't know, I...
I don't think you'll see any progress.
I don't see, I really don't see...
But you never know.
Much. Uh, the one on contiguous frontage, to me, that's just...
That's a no-brainer.
It's making it like everybody else already has it.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the, the lot width requirement, I could see maybe some of the builders being a little upset about that, because it might limit them a little bit in what they can do, but, uh, but once again, I can still see that, you know, to avoid some of these super squirrely lots. Yeah, speaking of the wind.
Not only the wind, but now I can feel the draft.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm sure they've got the lid to cover on the, uh...
On the outside, on the S, S C, yeah.
Uh-huh, sure.
Duck type.
So, and let's see what the third one is, the ZVA thing.
I feel there should be no problems with that.
Should really be, you know, no problem. So, I, you know, I, I don't know, I guess we can answer to at least some extent anybody that has a major question. We might just stop it on you. Because you're going to be...
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway.
I'll get that out for a sec tomorrow because I gotta take care of that very quickly, right?
It's going to be an interesting town meeting, I think, I think.
Yes.
They're spending, you know, bits and pieces of money, it seems, just all over the place.
Yeah, it's, it's starting to make me very nervous.
You know, one of the ones, one of the ones that just gets me, and like, you know, maybe you're more, more in tune with this than, than almost anyone else, the study for the intersection of sixty-eight and Watchuson Street. I, I forget what the number is that they want for that traffic study.
It's quite a bit of money.
Yeah, it, it's...
Yeah.
Many thousands.
Yes.
And, and you know, when I look at the intersection there, what's wrong with it?
Um, wait a minute, do people drive on that? Yes, here's the problem.
Yeah, what I mean, you know, both roads perfectly straight in both directions, line of sight is almost unlimited in all directions.
Not quite coming down the hill from Watchuson though.
Pretty close.
But, you know, no, it's close, but it's, it could stand some...
I, I do, I, I try to help out and cut back frequently, I did it for Gary and I did it this year also for Joe, because I got sick and tired of nosing out into sixty-eight so he could look down, but to me, that's, that's the only thing that I've ever really seen.
Yeah.
But it's, 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 it's who's behind the wheel. It's, it's nutshell right there.
That, to me, is, is that whole thing, and I, I don't know, I just, I don't know.
Put a four-way stop?
Yeah, sure, sure. No, I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Now, there's already a blinking light there, isn't there?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, so, you know, put a little sign up on Watchuson Street, a little ways back, stop ahead.
There's a big one, you know, they put a bigger stop sign in, they, they do have, uh, you know, another sign up on top of hill just before you crest over going down to sixty-eight. If anything, they could probably put a solar-powered LED lights on the thing flashing, uh, but maybe what they need is a huge sign, you idiot, stop! Who, who knows, it, it just...
It, it just seems like that, that's, well, to my way of thinking, it's a waste of money.
I think it was to, um, I forgot again, what was I, what was I thinking of? Oh, speed limit, speed limit signs.
They're on...
Watchuson.
On Watchuson Street, forty mile an hour speed limit signs are going, are going here.
And when they did that on, on Glenwood Road, people started going, oh, I thought it was, we had to go slow here, about forty miles an hour. And they're only going, you know, you know they got to give us a, you know, five, ten mile.
Yeah.
Because, um, one of the police chiefs one day told me that they stopped somebody with radar going sixty-two miles an hour on...
Glenwood?
Glenwood Road, in front of our house. And there's some kid who does this, oh, I mean, I must have seen him at least half a dozen times, he comes, he's on a motorcycle, he comes around Watchuson Street and then he pops a wheelie, like all the way out of sight, going down towards the main street.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I'll put him on horse and buggy.
Yep.
As far as subdivision regulations, review and everything else, um, I feel that, once again, if we can get another day or another, uh, sometime, a fifth week, a fifth, you know, something like that, to, to pull something like that.
But I, in talking with, with Dave, I am thinking our next meeting, likely, we are going to be able to spend significant time.
Okay.
Right there. Unless, you know, you never know what's going to happen.
Well, there's no hearings, there's an A and R, but there's no jet to sixty-one, there's no ZVA stuff, there's a decision. It's good, good, very likely.
Yeah. That'd be good and... I'll tell you one thing, uh, some one of these days, I gotta get a new copy, new copy. But this, that's a little bit old.
I was going to schedule, to see if anybody wanted to schedule a meeting for tomorrow, but then I remembered it was Veterans Day and you have to post two days in advance and I couldn't do it. But I think the reason that I've been reluctant or kind of dragging my heels on this is that I really like to do it, but I keep thinking I'm not going to be as, you know, as organized as I was before. And, uh, if you don't mind, that I can't step the right word every time, every now and then, I think that's what was bothering me, I didn't want to find out that I, yeah, you are, you are having trouble, but I think what happened is I, I overreact to it anesthesia and at the last minute, they told me they had to give me the anesthesia because of polyarthritis, they didn't want to go do a, you know, injection into the spine. And then they screwed it all up actually and came out with not, it's called aphasia, I know what I want to say, but I can't always say it, so... I'm not, I, you know, I, I know it's probably my issue and not your issue.
Yeah, I agree.
So, um, yeah, the next, we run into Thanksgiving.
I was going to say Thanksgiving, Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's kind of, kind of the worst part about that.
Yeah.
Do, do we have a good list of stuff to work on?
Um, no, the only thing I know is we want to work on, um, now I forgot again.
The noise?
Say it again.
The noise.
The noise one, construction noise.
Right.
That's the only one that comes to my mind.
Right, that, and if you want to move the, uh... This is frustrating.
I'll tell you what, why, on the noise one, why don't we just try to plan for that particular one, or at least to get started on it and we can have a discussion about anything else.
If you want to do the, what, uh, the bylaw? Do you want to move, the, the one we were, you were just talking about doing next time, next week?
Next week is...
The subdivision regulations.
Is on a, on a, you're talking the twenty-sixth is our next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm trying to look at that calendar. Yeah, the twenty-seventh, if we went, we're, we're going to do it at the same schedule.
The day before Thanksgiving, no. Sorry.
I think I'll probably be out of town or take off.
So the only other thing would be, uh, December tenth would be our next meeting, so either the eleventh.
That would probably work.
Yeah.
At least, that's a little distance away from Christmas too.
Yes, it is. Why don't we try that, Maryland? December eleventh.
So this is, is a business meeting to work on something?
No, subcommittee meeting.
This is, this is...
A bylaw subcommittee.
Bylaw subcommittee.
You don't, you don't need to be there for that then?
No.
No.
Oh, wait.
We always need you.
I appreciate that, thank you. I lost track of where we, okay, this is not for the subject, okay?
No.
This is to work on the noise bylaw. Okay. Was there any animal control bylaw on the table, something else?
That comes, is under...
That's a general bylaw.
Yeah.
And...
Well, the noise bylaw would be a general bylaw?
No, it's, that's a zoning. No, it's, that's a zoning, or is it?
I just offer my, my opinion on this is that it's generally a general bylaw, proper on the pun, it's not usually a zoning bylaw.
Yeah, that would kinda make sense.
Not from what I've seen out there.
Yeah, this is another thing that Peter Crane brought up, is the sign bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
I guess is not necessarily, has to be a zoning bylaw.
A sign bylaw can go either way, it can be a general bylaw or a zoning bylaw, but it's very common to see it as a zoning bylaw.
I was gonna say, I, I think it would be zoning because you are telling them where the dimensions and everything else.
Well, yeah.
That's part of it.
Off the road or whatever, you know, it can't be...
Correct, so that's where you'll see dimension would be granted false signs because of those things.
That's correct.
If someone wanted to put a sign of X size bigger than what's allowed by law, for example, they can make a case that because of the shape of the land or topography or what have you, they need a bigger sign. So they, it's tied, it can be tied to those things that go into granting a variance or special permit, that's why you'll see it in a zoning bylaw, because there's a dimensional piece to it.
Well, it would also be different regulations for different zones, too, business zone, industrial zone.
Yeah.
However, I would caution this board, if this board was looking to do a sign bylaw, we may wanna talk about getting a consultant who understands the legalities behind sign bylaws, because there was a recent, not recent at this point, but a, a court case, Reed versus a township, I forgot the town, where the sign bylaw was found to be unconstitutional because it was disparate treatment in the same zoning district for different uses, where it has to be uniform. So I would caution that that may need a little bit of assistance beyond, you know...
See, it wasn't, it wasn't that many years ago that we adopted the new sign bylaw.
And Reed came afterwards.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm probably, pretty sure of that.
And Gilbert, Gilbert versus Reed, or Reed versus Gilbert, that came along afterwards. And many signs, bylaws in the Commonwealth were found to be unconstitutional, but it was just a wherewithal and the time and resources to do it right is, a lot of times, signs fall when they were low priority, you wait till you're challenged, then you do something. So a lot of municipalities haven't addressed the issue, but they haven't been subject to an attack like happened in Reed.
Well, I think that's, that's something that we should look at, because there's always, there's already controversy in town here. And to try to find a specialist for that type of a thing.
Whether it's CMR PC or others, I mean, is there a suggestion that this be a priority as a zoning matter? If so, I, I would...
I'm not, I'm not, I don't know, I'm not worried about sign bylaw at this point.
I mean, at this point...
Eventually, I am, eventually I would like to, because there's been so many people about the dentist.
Yeah.
And I would like to have that straightened out so that it won't happen again, you know, have a...
But I don't know if that needs, requires a whole rewrite.
No, no.
That, that's the other side of it, because our sign bylaw is pretty detailed.
Yes.
I don't know if ours is unconstitutional or not, I haven't had a reasonable...
Yeah.
I'm just pointing out pitfalls of dealing with sign bylaws, just, you know.
Signs, was there something else you mentioned as a suggestion?
Well, we figured noise is not in our realm.
I, I, I have talked about major home occupation.
Oh, my God. To me, that's, that's critical. I am, I'm, I'm getting to the point lately, for crying out loud, that I just, I think it needs to be brought up, updated and whatever, and, and...
Well, I, I just, I, I just keep getting this feeling that someone has gotta manage to get some kind of a major home occupation that is basically a manufacturing thing in the middle of a subdivision.
Yeah.
Well, across the street from us, um, it's, it's, uh, Goodfellows Home Construction, something like that, they build whole houses.
Mm-hmm.
And they're using the, the, the house across the street from us, and as they're, they put up this huge personal, it's a garage, and they got it approved as a personal garage space, and the darn thing is like twenty feet this way and has like a, you know, huge doors in it, it's a warehouse. And they have eighteen-wheelers who come, one day the eighteen-wheeler was there, they have to park, a lot of times they park on the road, and they have their little dolly thing that comes off the back of the truck, and it was like nine o'clock, actually eight, eight-thirty or so, and the buses are trying to get by and the delivery man on his little wheeled dolly thing is trying to get, you know, loads of windows that were heading to be swerved in that garage. But, I mean, that, that's definitely a major home occupation, and then they, a lot of times, the, they have several crews and the crews come in to, you know, get like a business meeting and...
Well, that sounds like that might be a zoning violation, 'cause I'm looking at home occupation major, no more than three employees not residing on the premises.
There, there is no major home occupation permit for that plan.
Clearly, if the dental subordinate into the primary residential nature of the property, there's nothing in there that sounds like it would work under major home occupation. If they act like it was to seek a permit, given that scenario, I don't think the board would have basis to grant it. So that could be a zoning violation.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a...
That's, that's a will.
Yep.
And where there's a will, there's a way.
Yes, it did.
Okay.
So, we, we have things that we could have discussions about and, and to move forward.
I'm not clear, maybe there isn't clarity on it, is what the committee does, the, the ad hoc committee, is that...
Yeah.
Is that a permanent committee now?
No. And just, so in a word, it is...
Well, my question would be...
The, the ad hoc committee took on the task of codifying the general bylaws, which is what we are doing. After a number of, shall I call it corrections, modifications, to the charge of the ad hoc bylaw committee. The thing is, the town meeting passed a bylaw creating a bylaw committee.
Right.
Okay, well, the idea of that was that, okay, once that passed town meeting, the ad hoc bylaw committee would disappear.
Right.
And that new committee would then take over, so to speak. However, and I'm assuming this is with the blessing of selectmen or whatever, uh, there seems to be a sentiment that, well, you know, the ad hoc committee is, I don't know, say, we're maybe three-quarters of the way through, or maybe more, of codifying the general bylaws, well, why dissolve a committee and then have a new committee pick up in the middle of the process? Because you have to go through the whole process of appointing, you know, looking for applicants, appointing, and, and who knows whether you're gonna get the same people, different people, or, or whatever. So, I, I guess basically, the bylaw committee, by town bylaw, is just kind of sitting there waiting for the ad hoc committee to finish its work.
The ad hoc committee that doesn't exist anymore?
It does, it still exists.
Yeah.
But they, they did, and I, I don't, I don't recall the exact wording, because there, there were several, at least a couple of different changes to the charge of the ad hoc committee, mostly regarding when it disappears. Okay, and I think now it's, I don't know if it says it specifically, or whatever, but it could very well be saying that, you know, when, when the ad hoc committee is finished codifying the bylaws, then it disappears.
Mm-hmm.
And the regular bylaw committee, by, 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 by laws. Yeah. Is that, is that clear?
Yes.
I'm glad.
But are they gonna be writing, you know, for example, if we're, we're doing the, the ones that apply to this committee, are they gonna be writing other, all the other bylaws or what's...
Any general bylaw.
General bylaw.
It'll be shared with any general bylaw.
Zoning will still stay with us.
Zoning stays with the bylaw subcommittee.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, but I'm glad to have, glad, have some clarity on it.
We got through a whole half-page of the bylaw regarding the town administrator today.
Wow.
A whole half-page.
I, I just, I... Someday, I hope to have a few minutes, I'd like to take a look at that sucker, because the town administrator, in my opinion, is still a policymaker only, period. A town manager will, I think, I feel that...
Well...
That's different.
The town administrator is...
Is just doing stuff with the select board.
The chief administrator.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, of the town, whereas the select board is the chief executive.
Supposedly, yes, but I think, you know, sometimes I think they pull an awful lot onto like...
In this bylaw, there is, yes, gonna be a lot that will be not done by selectmen or will be done by the town administrator.
That's where I'd like to read and find out.
Very, very particularly, many, many of the appointments in town will fall to the town administrator, uh, that have previously been selectmen. I don't know, but I'm just, I was trying to think, going through the whole thing and try and, trying to, you know, think of what these powers are. And, I don't know, I, I, I think we are coming up with a pretty good balance, that's all I can say.
Well, time will tell.
Yeah.
Time will tell. And speaking of that, make a motion to adjourn, do you have anything else?
Does anybody have anything else?
No.
I'll sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.